Good evening, everyone. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant Arms, has the lobby been attended to?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. I am pleased to welcome you to the January 7th, 2025 School Board Meeting. The time is 6:00 PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district vision, which is to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes moment of silence, pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include four items under Board Office, one item under Executive Services, one item under Academic Services, four items under Business Services, four items under Human Resources, 20 items under Operations, and four items under Good of the Order Other Business. Board members, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Ribble, seconded by Ms. Juvenelli, so please, please record your vote. Motion carries seven zero. As is the custom of the Board, I will lead us in a moment of silence, after which Mrs. Chaviano will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand. And ask everyone to bow their heads in a moment of silence. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, Mrs. Chaviano.
Board members, please join me in the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Next up on the agenda is acknowledgements. The character word for January is commitment. Commitment is what transforms a promise into reality. Abraham Lincoln. The design displayed on the screen was created by Mariana Maldonado, a 12th grade student at Estero High School. So, next up on the agenda is recognition, so Board members and Madam Superintendent, please join me in the pit for recognitions.
Is she here? Good evening. The School District of Lee County is proud to announce that our Chief Human Resource Officer Angelo Montemano Arro has been named the winner of the prestigious HR Excellent Award in Education for the North American Region at the 2024 HRO Today Association Conference and Awards Program. This remarkable recognition highlights the exceptional leadership and dedication of our Chief Human Resource Officer and the outstanding contributions of the Human Resources Team. We take pride, great pride in honoring her as a leader of distinction. The HR Today Association Awards is an annual recognition program that exemplifies the essential work that HR professionals do every day and provides people, teams, partners, and companies an opportunity to share the best practices and successes so colleagues in the industry can benefit from their experience. Winning the 2024 HR Excellence Award in Education for the North American Region is a proud moment for Chief Montemano Arro and her HR team and the School District of Lee County, Florida. This achievement is a milestone in our ongoing journey to improve employee well-being and drive HR innovation. The School Board and Superintendent proudly congratulates Ms. Montemano Arro and all the other winners and nominees who continue to inspire excellence. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to the HRO Today Association for this recognition and their support in professional development within the HR community. We are excited to see what the future holds. Congratulations.
Yes, no, thank you so much.
Moving on, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Attorney Bree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the Board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the Board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the district. The School Board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language defined as swearing, use of profanity, or name-calling is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, or display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the Board Chair or the Board Attorney. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed from the chambers by the Sergeant at Arms. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call you five speakers at a time and please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are four individuals that would like to address the Board this evening, three minutes per speaker.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Please ensure you have completed a public comment card to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak, providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make public comment that has not filled out a public comment card yet? Okay, seeing none, please proceed with public comment. Attorney Bree Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the following individuals please line up? Robert Rios, Anthony Call, Michael Andosia, Sergio Cruz.
I don't see a clock, so. Good evening, everybody. I was here at last meeting and I kind of got derailed because one of the bus drivers spoke and I completely lost what I was going to talk about as a maintenance man. I mentioned a few things briefly. I did maintenance and I do like my job. But when I mentioned that our pays went down, they did. We used to get 2204 to start. Now they brought us down to 2199. That's a cut in pay. And when the union was going into all the arbitration stuff, they were talking about it. We were supposed to go up and then if you're in between a step you went up, you got a better raise than you got. By cutting the five cents off, probably a good portion of people only got their five, six percent raise, not the extra that they were talking about during all the meetings. The last meeting was done in a secret place, so we don't know what happened with that. So I feel it's kind of, I don't know whose fault, the Board's or the union's fault, whatever, but in that lines, I know the state of Florida says you need 60% to be recognized at a union. And I think they're down to 20% or 25%. And we struck a deal with you guys with only 20-some percent of the people that are in the unions. I think the union has to go. It's time for us, Lee County employees, to put our big pants on and we can deal with the Board ourselves. We don't need a union. For what we're getting, they're bragging about this big raise we got. Well, we got 8% one year, but it went up 18%. So we got 10% less than what the inflation went up. Then it went up some more. Now this time I got 6%. Well, I'm still not at the 18% from a couple of years ago. So we haven't caught up. You know, when Hurricane Ian hit, people from other districts were making, in maintenance, were making 30-some odd dollars an hour. They had nice new trucks. We were driving around with 2002s, antique plates on them. But we still don't make the same amount of money they make. What's the problem? Are we not good enough? The ball's in your court. You know, we're hiring people that can't even speak English. They talk on their phone and they translate. It doesn't make sense. We gave one guy, he said, "Do this." He made this thing. I said, "What is that?" We gave him the measurements. That's what we're dealing with. We have people that's been in maintenance for 13, 14 years. That, "We were working over here." He says, "That guy is here. I'm leaving. I will not work with them." Give us a break, like I said.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Call. I wanted to say first, Ms. Juvenelli, thank you for what you said at last meeting. You are right. God is not making any more property. We should hold on to what we got because people are buying property at low rates and buildings, big apartment buildings, that none of us can afford, especially us as bus drivers. My second thing is, is thank you all very much because the last couple of meetings I've been to, things are, wheels are starting to turn. Things are starting to turn around. I appreciate that. But we still do have a lot more way to go to get transportation back where it needs to go. I understand. Everybody has their job. When you put main people in charge that's never done this type of work, they do good, but they don't understand. If you're not driving a bus, none of you can tell me what the quickest way is around to get through town. The computer system that these poor routing people have is garbage. They're at, they're telling me to take a route, takes an hour, 125 minutes to do. I'm telling you, as a truck driver, as a tow truck driver in this town during traffic this time of season, that's not happening. When we go in and try to explain that this isn't safe, they can't do nothing because the system won't let it. When they add a stop to us, you would think that it would give us more time. No, it drops us time. When they take a stop off, it drops us time. When you go in and explain this, there's nothing the router can do. There's nothing our dispatchers can do, nothing our supervisor can do, but tell us to spend extra time and go in and put extra time in the computer. There's also a little bitty paragraph in the thing that says, "Every day I should look to see what I get paid." I clock in three times a day on three different pieces of equipment. I clock in when I clock in for my RTM, which is our route management time, which is always wrong because it doesn't calculate our drive time and traffic. Then you have us clock into the million-dollar tablets that are garbage because they don't show us a route. We actually have to figure it out from point to point to point. Then you have GPS on our buses. That's all fine and dandy. But when those systems don't integrate to our payroll so that they can look and check our payroll and I have to fight for my payroll? That's not right. That's not right to any of us drivers. All we ask is that we get paid for what we do. It was a nice system. You clock in, you clock out at the end of the day, you clock out after your run's over. You clocked in four or five times. You could still tell if somebody was lying to you because their buses are GPS in the tablets. Why, why are we doing this and causing so much heartache? If you look into that, you'll see that that's the main complaint of every bus driver and our dispatchers and everybody.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Your time is up.
Mike Andesha, Fort Myers, former teacher. I want to give a real brief history of education. When we first start, you know, through most of human history, education took place in the family and was dedicated to whatever the needs of the family were. Numeracy and literacy were rare. And this worked out pretty well for most people because most people's experiences with the world were usually within a few miles of the place that they were born. But as we started to progress, as we started to, as the world became more complicated and more integrated, people's experiences with the world expanded and people needed to have greater access to education. We invested in public schools, common schools, as they were called. And, and even still, the curriculum was fairly narrow. Literacy, basic literacy and primacy and numeracy was the, was the call for the day and that sufficed, but the world became more complicated. The world expanded and people's experiences with the world expanded with it and with it the need for a greater education. As we moved on through the 19th century and into the 20th century, we got to the point where our fourth-grade education, our sixth-grade education, and eighth-grade education, these weren't good enough. Basic literacy and numeracy was not good enough. People needed to have a background in advanced literacy and more advanced literacy and numeracy. History, science, as we become more integrated and we are interacting with different cultures and peoples all over the world and globalized trade, we need to invest in foreign languages, multicultural experiences, humanities, the arts, the sciences. In the 20th century, education, in the mid-20th century, education was looked at as a national interest. And the curriculum continued to expand. The curriculum continued to get more broad. Now we find ourselves in a position where we are not just using computers, we are interacting with computers. Our communication networks are such that we can communicate with people all over the world at the speed of light. Our communication and travel networks expand into outer space. And yet here in Florida and in Lee County, we find ourselves under pressure to, what? Narrow the curriculum, to restrict the things that teachers can bring into the classroom, the things that they can say, under penalty. And we are doing exactly the opposite of what the history suggests we need to do. If we want to have a world-class education system, we need to find ways of expanding the curriculum into fields that our students need to thrive, not just in Lee County, but all over the world. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as both a familiar face to a few and maybe a new face to some. I wanted to congratulate our new Board members and superintendent. And just introduce myself. My name is Sergio Cruz. I'm a dad and just a parent advocate. A champion for individuals with disabilities and their peers. Usually when I come to these things, I try to bring not only a critique but a positive note or a praise. So I'm going to try to do just that tonight. So there's two, two key things that I wanted to bring up. The first is, I've noticed as I came that I do get some, some results when I'm, you know, make a comment or criticism, critique, if you would. But it's not usually the best place for the, for the type of engagement that some of these conversations would need. And so typically, those would be in things that would be customarily like an advisory committee. So I thought that that would be what, you know, what our, our district's ESC Advisory Committee would kind of be a platform for. Unfortunately, it's not kind of ran in that direction. It's not as equitable and equal to some of the other advisory boards that have like a board liaison or a public comment section or really any kind of consistent discourse. You know, they meet quarterly. It's more of like a teach and take kind of a scenario versus, you know, actual engagement with the genuine stakeholders. It's, you know, usually some vendor or whatnot. And I'll digress on that, but I just would really like that now that we have, you know, a couple of new faces that, you know, maybe somebody could maybe find it upon themselves to want a champion and kind of move that committee to be, you know, more engaging and equitable to some of the other committees that are in the district. Because I, I do think, and I'm not trying to scare anybody off as of yet, but I do think that there are some major issues within the district, specifically ESC, that I could easily point out. And I do think that even some of the quote-unquote data that is out there that speaks for the positives of the district is a little misleading when you actually thoroughly investigate that. But I digress. The second thing I would say would be about a positive note. When I approached the district a couple of months ago about an initiative for autism drowning and an elopement, because it's an epidemic in Florida. And I had gotten some voice and some support from some of the members and also had one of the leaders in the district reach out to me. So I just wanted to kind of share an update and hope to kind of elicit some more support from any maybe of the new members that might want to jump on this. But we are doing, we have been able to secure with the Fort Myers Fire Department and we're working with other departments throughout the district and county to secure free CPR and first-day training for families of children with autism as well as we've partnered up with a swim instructor who is specialized with this population to try to do that. I would really love if anybody sees this to kind of pull on their heartstrings to reach out to me and collaborate and we can try to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Chairman, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Attorney Bree Bruno. Thank you, everyone. We truly, truly appreciate your public comment and your feedback. Next up on the agenda, we'll be moving to approval of consent action items. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to Board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or worked shop with the Board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items that you wish to pull for further discussion? Ms. Juvenelli?
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Ribble?
I have none. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Persons?
I have none.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
I have none.
Ms. Chaviano?
I have none.
And I have none. At this point, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda consent action items?
Motion.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Chaviano. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Please record your vote. Consent action items agenda is approved seven zero. Consent action items, excuse me. So at this point, Dr. Carlin, please introduce any administrators or attendants with a new assignment.
Thank you, Chair Fisher. It's my pleasure to introduce our new Assistant Principal at Bonita Springs High School, Yamara Leonard Aliho. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we know that you're going to do a great job at the school. I know Mr. Estes is thrilled to have you on board and we are delighted to welcome you to our Lee County Leadership Team. So congratulations.
Congratulations and best of luck. Okay. Next up on the agenda is Good of the Order Other Business. So we will start with Ms. Juvenelli.
Well, I'll start out by saying Happy New Year. And I hope that staff has had time to regroup and get ready for 2026 because there's a lot, we're expecting to do a lot of good things this year and hopefully transportation's one of them. And it's a, it's a work in progress, as you said, and the same with, with maintenance. So we're hearing you. And I know the superintendent's going to be really working hard to hone in on different departments and, and look at everything. It's going to take a little time, so please be patient. Rome wasn't built in a year. So I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I do want to talk really quick for Good of the Order, the advisory committees. We talked about that today, but we really didn't delve into it. I still don't know that I understand exactly what, how we're going to get volunteers from DAC because there's only two people to each school that comes, that attends that. So I don't really know how that's going to work. I wanted, wanted to bring that to the attention to the Board tonight, that I think we need to have conversations with the superintendent on, because Sergio brought up, you know, something regarding EDAC and I think that we really need to make sure that we're addressing and giving opportunity for the public to have. and giving opportunity for the public to have opportunity to interject rather than just three minutes at the dais that we really don't get to interject back with them. And that's our opportunity. I know we can do it in the community, but when people have concerns, these advisory groups really help to understand and have ideas and they share and they collaborate. And I think we're going to miss that collaboration piece with our community and the public. And I just wanted to bring that up. And I think we can work through this. I think we can, we can, we can work it out, but I still think it's a work in progress. I don't know that just DAC is going to take care of the needs that we have. And I know they want to have like little subcommittees from DAC, but I just don't know. If we don't have the volunteers at the bigger level, I don't know how you're going to get the volunteers from DAC. That's where I'm concerned, is the, is the actual volunteers. So I don't know how we engage that better. But anyways, I just want to bring that up and show that I am concerned over that and mention that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. Mr. Ribble?
Yeah, I just want to say every, wish everybody a Happy New Year. We got off to a great start this year. I'm very pleased to see how things are working out with our new superintendent. As many of you folks know, I was one of the candidates that campaigned, Superintendent Carlin and everything that she said she was going to do. She has put in place her, especially her quote, which I heard every time, sometimes three, four times a week. One vision, one team. Envision safe, secure schools. Increase student achievement. Expand technical education opportunities. Increase teacher retention and recruitment. Envision physical responsibility and that includes the must do's and the nice do's. Okay? Empower parents as partners in education. So I'm really glad to see that we got things off to a good roll, particularly with our one-on-ones and the, all the department heads, they seem to be lockstep with us to get this mission accomplished. And I did want to give some credit to Marshall Bauer and the President of Lee County School Foundation for hosting us on the 19th of December, us new folks. We had a great evening for about an hour and a half to get, meet all the key people that run the business community here in Lee County and really do a lot for our school district. So that's all I have. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ribble. Ms. Jordan?
I as well would like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and I'm just looking forward to the New Year's. Congratulations to Bonita. Also, I am looking forward to coming out and visiting schools, which I hope to start within the next week and even transportation. So I'll be out there. So thank you so much and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Persons?
Happy New Year. I would just want to make mention, give a shout out to McCalla Williams, who sang the National Anthem at the pre-session luncheon. That girl was fantastic. One of the best student renditions of that I think I've ever heard. And I believe she goes to Norfolk Myers. So congratulations to McCalla. A great job. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Ms. Langford Fleming?
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to mention going into this next year, I'm incredibly excited about it. We definitely keep student safety and staff safety at the forefront of our mind, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention this evening how my heartstrings have been pulled on with the two students in Lee County who were affected because those students were former, are former athletes in Lee County. And while yes, they attended a private school, they had many public school friends, colleagues. And I just want to send my condolences to those families and thankfully it sounds like those two young women are going to pull out of that Ellen Steele. Thank you for the members of the community that come and speak. When you come up to the microphone, they're not, your words aren't falling on deaf ears. And I would encourage anyone to come and use this time. I appreciate the fact that you leave your families in the evening to come share your thoughts with us. So thank you. They're always welcome. Mr. Cruz, I was very interested, the last time you came and spoke about the autism drowning and just the, the educational piece that, that we need to delve into as a district. So those conversations will continue, even if there are behind the scenes. I'm incredibly excited about the second semester after seeing all of the workshops today and all the things that are going to be happening because I think what, as, as you said better than I have, Mr. Ribble, that our superintendent is putting student achievement and school safety and student safety first and foremost. And I, and that's how we're going to win. That's how we're going to get across the finish line. So I hope that the staff and teachers are well rested and spent lots of time with family and I look forward to the spring as it approaches. It'll be here before we know it and we'll all be off to graduations. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming. Ms. Chaviano?
Yeah. One Happy New Year and two apologies for having to cut out, but I'm, I'm waiting for a tow, so I'm trying to get my car coat out of here. So that's it. So my apologies. But two things I wanted to touch on outside of what everyone else did. I was able to attend the Nutcracker during, so that was my kind of first attendance for the Nutcracker by the Norfolk Myers Academy of the Arts, which was incredible. I took my family there and even my youngest, who is nine years old, and even my middle schooler who thinks everything is uncool at this point, thought it was great. And my youngest was like, "I want to go to this school." So they did an incredible job and just kudos to, to that school and to that program. And then I also was able to attend the inaugural adult education honor society induction ceremony at the Dunbar Community School. 16 students were recognized for their outstanding achievement, dedication and leadership in their pursuit of education. Those 16 students were selected from over 2,000 adult students across the district. So that was really neat to watch and see those adults made the choice to pursue additional learning to, to advance their careers and move things forward and that's just tremendous and a big kudos to them. So just very happy to participate in that and mirroring what Jada said. For those of you that come and take the time to, to speak, I am always taking notes and taking those back when we have our one-on-ones and we have those discussions and I will be getting out and visiting schools and transportation is actually on my list as well. So thank you for, for taking the time to come out and thank you for the emails. We do read them and we do process them. So thank you so much and just again, I hope you guys rested up and are just eager to start this new year. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chaviano. I have a few things. Many of us attended the Teacher of the Year at Harons Marsh Middle and I'm going to butcher this name, so my apologies, Ms. Rebiore. Okay, okay. So, so that was amazing. I know she will be recognized, I know, at one of the upcoming meetings. I also attended at Mariner High School, the Kiss the Pig event. So that was, that was great. It was put on by the students and the Future Farmers of America to support the veterinary program there. And whatever administrators ended up raising the most money, Kiss the Pig. So it ended up being Dr. Michael and his team of APs, Kiss the Pig. So I did not kiss the pig, but I did get to see the pig. So that was great and it was awesome to see, especially, you know, the future farmers and agriculture and see some of their things brought in these schools. So that was really neat. I want to give a shout out to Mr. Persons on this. We have a community block grant through the Fed, but through the county. I know he was instrumental in helping to get some resiliency for us as he attended and was on those committees. So I appreciate that, sir. Next up, as I'm on the Drug Free Coalition, there is a Run for Prevention 5K. I mention this every year, so, and that is on January 25th, 2025, out of Babcock Ranch. I would encourage everyone to please sign up. You can go to drugfreely.org to get more information. So, and the last thing I have is we have talked about getting out in the community more as a board. There will be, the first town hall will be on January 23rd and that will be in District One, the district I'm at, and that'll be with Dr. Carlin at Cape Coral High School. It will be sometime in the evening and we'll be releasing information on that shortly. So that's all I have at the moment and thank you. We're now going to move on to Attorney Bree Bruno.
Just wishing everybody a Happy New Year. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I have just a few comments this evening. As was mentioned previously, we do appreciate when speakers come out. We also receive feedback in a wide variety of ways when we're out in the community via email, phone calls and all of that. I do want to let you know that our team is working extraordinarily hard. I push them each and every day, certainly through one-on-ones and our cabinet meetings and all of that, really to take a look, to be, as I said this afternoon, to be bold, to be courageous, to go to hard charge our issues. We have so many strengths in this school district. We do. But we have definitely some issues we need to go to work on and we are committed to doing that. And I want to tell you that our team is very serious about the work. Mr. Ribble, you were very kind in your comments. I will take every opportunity to remind you all that our number one priorities, school safety, student achievement, making sure we're working very hard on recruitment and retention, being fiscally responsible, treating those tax dollars that you entrust to us as the precious dollars that they are, and then making sure that we are empowering our parents as very important partners in education. So I will probably talk about that at most every meeting because I want you to know that we are just that committed to the work. We also, as Chair Fisher mentioned earlier today, we attended the Foundation for Lee County Schools. They had a board meeting right before the break. They are doing a great job working on strategic planning. They are working harder than ever to align their work with our priorities. And again, just want to give a shout out to Mike Wukic and as the, as the Chair of the, of the board and Marshall Bauer as their President and CEO and all of those board members that work so hard on behalf of our schools and our staff and our students. They're doing a great job and just again, my appreciation, they did honor Mr. Ribble, Ms. Chaviano, myself at a reception just prior to the break. So just a big shout out to the foundation for all of their support. Board members, next week, we're going to be in Tallahassee, as we talked about earlier today. You took a look at the 2025 legislative priorities and just for our public to know that we will be up in Tallahassee for a couple of days next week, working very hard with our legislators to make good things happen for our children. We're going to be advocating for policy changes, law changes and yes, funding. So please know that at our next meeting, we'll give you an update on how that went. I'm just really looking forward to joining you up in Tallahassee for the very first time as superintendent and I know we'll do great things up there. And then finally, just a very Happy New Year. As been stated previously, I hope that staff and students and families and community members had an opportunity to enjoy their families, get a little rest, jump off the merry-go-round, turn those phones off and just enjoy that family time. 2025 is going to be a very busy year. It's going to be a fantastic year and I look forward to leading and having the privilege to lead this school district as your superintendent. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. At next scheduled meetings on Tuesday, February 4th, there'll be a school board workshop at 1:00 PM, followed by a school board action meeting at 6:00 o'clock. At this point, having no other business, come before this body and see no objection, this meeting is hereby adjourned. The time is 6:39 PM. Happy New Year and have a great evening.